It's five past seven. I will call the meeting to order since we do have a quorum. If there's anyone recording this evening, would they make it known? Thank you. Just one thing, I would take out an order at this particular time. We have a public hearing regarding a TDR special permit for the AD Makepeace Company.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jim Kane with the AD Makepeace Company. Given the outcome of our conversation of last week, we would respectfully request to withdraw without prejudice. I think both parties are working in good faith and simply reading, well, what would you say? One says tomato, one says tomato. So perhaps if we could have the board's indulgence to withdraw without prejudice this evening, and then you folks could do the review that you would like, and in the event you would like our assistance, we're always available.
Motion, I guess we close the public hearing?
Second, close the public hearing?
Yep. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. See you later. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Same to you.
Just sidebar, if the board wants to look at the issue and revisit it for, you know, a spring town meeting as far as the revision, I was figuring that we would look at the long-term plan for a commercial component for the fall of 2015.
Mm-hmm.
But if you want to do something earlier on this or not, that's up to the board. John did write a note, which I think everybody has. I have a copy. You have the one, George, that he sent you?
Yes.
His response? He did talk about having the town holding a land bank. So that's up to what the board wants to do. Thank you.
If anyone needs a copy of the agenda, there's some on the front table there. First thing up is a A and R plan for Dugan Marine Realty. Care of Frank Westgate?
Good evening.
My name is Frank Westgate. I did the survey and prepared the plan. This is probably the simple, the most simple of Form A plans. It's pretty cut and dried if you take a look at the note down at the bottom. You see, we're not creating any new lots. We're not infringing on zoning or creating any illegal lots. And it should be pretty simple, but it doesn't require approval. I'll answer any questions.
The Jane Marie Lynch parcel. You have a line in there.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The Jane Marie Lynch parcel there on the left is aligned through the middle. Is there wetlands, a salt marsh? What is that?
That's the extent of the wetlands. That's from the original subdivision plan back in 1948. That was the edge of the marsh back then. We refer to that plan.
And what's the square footage of the parcel that she has left?
Oh, I don't know. I take a guess at it's probably maybe half an acre, but it's all marsh land. And it's owned by the same people that frontage out on the, right out on the street. It's all contiguous ownership.
Well, the zones are 30,000 square foot minimum?
It is 30,000 in there. However, those lots, this is in Cremesit, I'm sure you know that. All of those lots in there are undersized, but they're grandfathered in.
Cremesit or Rose Point?
Pardon?
Cremesit or Rose Point?
Cremesit. I'm sorry. Okay, I got confused. Been a long time. Yeah, it is Rose Point. Very good.
And aren't you reducing her lot below the 30,000 square foot minimum?
No. No. Which lot are you talking about?
Jane Marie Lynch.
Okay. We call that, that's, we call that a parcel, not a lot, under the definition of the subdivision control law. Lots, the lots that are out front on Leonard Street, 160 through 163, they're all combined. There's one dwelling there on those lots. But they're grandfathered in prior to zoning.
But if you're reducing the lot size below 30,000 square feet, that
Well...
you're creating a non-conformity.
Well, that's one way of looking at it. I didn't do the calculations on those lots in there, but I'm guessing they're probably, they're probably a good 20,000 square feet combined. And then you add the other half acre out back, you're well over the 30,000. That's my, that's a pretty good guess, if you want to do it that way.
Oh, I'd rather see the square footage.
Well, I can calculate it fairly roughly. If we're talking big numbers, it shouldn't matter that much. We got a 30 scale here. I didn't bring my calculator. Let's go 90 by 200, that's 18,000. I didn't think I'd need a pen here tonight. Can somebody add this up? Well, here it is. So the back, the back is approximately 250 by 160. Well, the back part in itself is over 30,000. So we have the front lots here, well over the 30,000. We would, this is so simple, we would have done it by deed, but the bank was involved. They insisted on a plan to be recorded with the deeds, and that's the only reason we're here.
Parcel A and B ought to be combined with land currently owned by Marine Realty, Doug and the...
Well, they're going to own the whole thing. We have to be careful about using the word contiguous, because he may want to, down the road, he may want to sell that dwelling, which is on a separate lot, without having to come back here to re-divide it. But he'll own the whole thing. He'll own the parcel A, parcel B, and then to the right of Leonard Street, to the east of Leonard Street, he already owns that, and he owns southerly of Leonard Street. He'll own all the way around it.
But you would still have to create a legal lot for the dwelling?
No, that's already in effect. There's a deed for that lot. That's a separate lot.
I was looking at the bold lines. I thought it was something you were creating.
We're creating parcel A. We're taking lot 1,000, and we're dividing it into two, Lot 1,000 and 1,008. Those are assessor references. It's all marsh land. A little bit of it is upland, but most of it is marsh land. We're dividing that lot, yes, but it's not a lot, it's a parcel. Certainly not buildable.
So you're not creating parcel B?
Parcel B? No, that's a lot. If you take, if you, I didn't bring the old recorded plan with me, but that's exactly the way it's shown, except for the east and running across the northwest corner. That's exactly the way that's set forth. There's two lots, and, but they were combined when they built the dwelling. So it's one lot now, and it's on the assessor maps that way. And the same with the other lots to the west, owned by the daughter. There's four lots there, and there's one dwelling, but that's considered one lot. That can never be re-subdivided either. One of the purposes of the plan is he want, my client, who of course is Dugan Marine Realty, he wants access to that man-made creek, okay? He wants to be able to swim or boat or whatever they do for recreation in there. And of course, he also wants that, that remaining waterfrontage out there on parcel A. I don't know what he could ever do with that without, without problems with Concom, but that's the agreement they made, and the deeds have already, I already wrote the deeds.
I'm just curious why it's labeled parcel B and not lot, such and such.
Only because of the way, the way the deed is written, okay? If you, it's actually lots 164-165, and that's the way it's assessed, under separate ownership. But for the purpose of the deed, we have to show parcel A, parcel B, all one and two, however. And that's the only reason. To do it in one deed.
You see, you don't have the assessor's card on it? We're just looking here through the file, let's see if there's...
Do I give the assessor reference? Yeah, it's map 78. I went over this already with David, your new town planner. He didn't think there was a problem with this.
So right now, the current, the way the deed is now, parcel A and parcel B is combined as one lot?
No.
Lot 1,000? It is part of parcel, where's parcel A coming from?
That whole back piece, which is now 1,000 on the left and 1,000 A on the right, was all 1,000 until now, until we passed papers. Okay, so we're taking 1,000 A and conveying it to my client. It's a separate, that's from Jane Marie Lynch. She owns it, okay? The house, which is parcel B, is owned by her mom, and she's conveying that. So there's two separate parcels.
So parcel B has nothing to do with this transaction? Where's parcel B?
If you take a look at the note, the bottom left, it's pretty clear. That's mom, that's mother and daughter, okay?
Parcel A, that's all the backland?
Yep.
Patricia Johnson, that's her daughter?
That's the mama. That's the mother.
Okay.
The dad deeded him out. He's getting quite old, so... Actually, there'll be two deeds, one from the mom, one from the daughter.
I think under the zoning law, it's 30,000 square feet, and 80% of that has to be upland.
Okay. I want to remind you that all of those lots at Rose Point are undersized, every one of them, but they're grandfathered in. They came well before the zoning. So they're locked in under a separate deed. Even though she happens to own out back, it's a separate deed.
Well, it's contiguous owned parcels. It doesn't really make any difference how many deeds she's got. You've got, you're already under the minimum upland requirement for a building lot, and now you're taking away more uplands.
No, we're not. No, we're not taking away more.
It says upland right here on the parcel A.
But it's not contiguous. It's not contiguous with the parcels or the lots that front on Leonard Street, if you take a real close look at that wetland line.
This is a wetland line from when?
Well, if you take a look at where it says upland, see the dash line?
I see...
Wiggly line?
Yeah. When was the wetland line done?
It's salt marsh, it's pretty definite. I did it back two months ago, I think, when I did the survey.
Well, you said this, this line here in the middle was done...
Pardon?
This line hit right in the middle of her lot, you said, was part of the subdivision wetland line?
I don't know where you're talking about when you say the middle of her lot.
Right here.
That's, see, that's the division line. She, she owns those lots, those four lots, 160 through 163, as one parcel, and she's assessed that way. That's where her house is.
Yeah.
She also happens to own that backland, which is salt marsh, and she's conveying a portion of that, and that's, none of that is considered.
Where does this line come from?
It came from the 1948 plan of Rose Point. That's the way that line was set forth.
Is that a wetland line, or is that what?
At that point, at that time, at that point in time, it was the wetland line, or it was designated that way. They didn't call it wetland. They called it the edge of the marsh back then, and it's pretty close now.
But we don't, we don't have a current line?
Well, I just, I just want to remind the board that this is very definitely a Form A plan, and if you're worried about that we might be violating zoning, that really is under the purview of the building inspector. I think, I'm not trying to lecture you, but all you're faced with is determining whether or not this requires approval. Once you determine that, okay?
Well, the thing is, is if you got lot 1,008 right off the bat,
Yeah.
that's a problem, because you're trying to create a lot. It's not a lot, it's a parcel.
That's why I'm, we're calling it parcel A, okay?
Okay. So right off the bat, lot shouldn't even be on that print?
No, it's a parcel. It's the difference between a parcel and a lot. If you look under the subdivision control law, you'll see that.
Now, when I look at parcel B, parcel B is a lot.
Right.
Okay, it should be labeled as a lot.
Well, it is. It's 164 and 165, but that's for the clarity when we write the deeds. It's going to be a little convoluted when they do these deeds. But that's the only reason it's legal as a parcel, so they can be described in a separate deed. I don't, I don't see what that has to do with zoning or subdivision control. You know, I'm going to tell you something without, without being too sarcastic. I was on the planning board back in the early '50s when subdivision first came in, first became effective. We had five-member board. We had a chairperson, and we had a clerk. The clerk was empowered to sign Form A plans. She worked downtown at the law office, Rosie Howland. If you had a Form A plan, you didn't want to wait for the next planning board meeting, you took it down to her office. She asked a few questions and signed it, and it was that simple. And the chapter 41, section 81L, if you look at it close, it's meant to be that simple. It takes, it takes the burden off you. If you inadherently sign a plan and create an illegal lot, the billing inspector is the one. Okay, he's the ultimate authority on that. So you can reduce a lot of aggravation of paperwork. Okay? But everything over the years now has become so complicated, and it's, and I don't know why.
It's the same process you just described, but instead of Ronnie Howland asking questions, we're asking questions.
Right. Okay, but she didn't have that. She'd have signed this in a second. Normally a Form A plan, you're creating lots, right, on a public way, usually. Isn't that the case? We're not creating anything. We're just conveying land, and like I said, we'd do it by deed if we went for the bank involved. But if you see something that you want to change on the plan, feel free to tell me what it is, and we'll, we'll revise it and come back.
So right now, without any further transfer of property, lots 160 through 163 belong to Ms. Lynch, and 164 and 165 belong to Patricia Johnson?
That's correct, her mom.
So that's, that conveyance already took place?
Yes, right. And they're shown that way on, on the assessor map. The assessor map shows that those two, two owners.
Also, in going through the paperwork, I don't see the tax verification form signed off. It's all filled out, but it doesn't have John Foster's signature on it. Do you have another?
What signature? Who has to sign that? Didn't I sign it as the agent?
No, the tax clerk has to sign it.
Oh, I see. Oh, that. Oh, yeah. Oh, that one, okay. I thought David did that.
Can you rate John Foster pretty good?
No. David said we were all set. He said, "Come on in," because he couldn't make it. He said, "Come on in, they'll sign the plan, and you're out of here."
Well, unless there's another copy here that he signed off, I don't see it.
No, no, I'm not talking about the tax clerk. I'm talking about your planner.
What else is... In combining those two... Did you say her house is currently on this, on 160 to 63, this house?
Yeah, there's one house there on those four lots, and that's under a separate deed, separate ownership. If he had conveyed, the dad, if he had conveyed the backland to, to his wife rather than the daughter, you'd have no problem, right?
Questions or concerns? Motion? No, I'm just concerned that it's reducing the amount of upland area, and the plan really doesn't show what the uplands are. There's nothing, not a lot of information. Even her house isn't shown.
That right there is going to go.
So remove lot from...
Yeah. 1,000 A can't be shown on print as a lot.
What is the phraseology we put on?
A lot's a parcel in this building.
No, I mean, we had a paragraph that we were adding, that disclaimer that does not create, does not, makes no ruling on whether it's buildable or not.
Right. I can't remember exactly where it's from.
Yeah, there's, there's several. There's four different paragraphs that are supposed to show up on the, on the Form A plan. Which is lot 1,001? I've not seen that.
Pardon?
Lot 1,001, where is that?
1,001. 1,001. 1,001. Why don't I see it? Why don't I see 1,001?
That's, that's why I asked.
Oh.
Because you said CSS is map 78, lot, block three, lots 164 through 165, and lot 1,001.
Ah, that's an error. Very good.
I don't see 1,001.
It should be 1,000. That's a mistake.
That's why I asked you, where parcel B come from? Parcel B is, I believe is 1,001?
Nope. Parcel B is a combination of 164 and 165.
Which is lot 1,001?
No, it's not. It's, it's, no.
No, that's what it says on the thing here. Lot 164, 165. Oh, okay, and lot 1,001. That's it. Now you're getting me confused here. 1,000? 1,000? Wow. What's going to your judge?
Well, he's saying it should say lot 1,000.
Right, that's, that's an error.
It shouldn't say lot 1,001. It should say lot 1,000.
Yeah.
Where's the actual property? Is that meandering line on the back of, okay, 160, 161, 162, 163?
Right, that's the original marsh line back in 1948.
Okay, and that went all the way back to the existing ditch?
No. It goes along that wiggly line, that curved line. That's, that's the back of those lots. Okay, and that's one parcel, one deed, okay? And then she happens, she happens to have deeded that back parcel, lot 1000, to her also. She could've, he could've conveyed it to the mom, it would've been, I mean, yeah, to the wife, would've been a lot easier on your part. But trust me, we're not violating any zoning here and we're not intruding on the subdivision control law.
Yeah, I would assume that when it's combined with land belonging to Dugan Marine Realty, it becomes more conforming rather than less.
True.
But that action hasn't...
No, that's got nothing, it's not happening here, no.
You know when these dwellings were built, realtor?
Pardon?
You know when the dwellings were constructed?
The drawings?
Dwellings.
The dwelling, oh, uh, my memory is that they were around the late 40s, early 50s.
So you're landlocked lot. Creating another landlocked lot. That's what we created, okay? So, we, we have situations like this all the time. There's a potential that this could come back and be a total nightmare.
Well, I don't see it that way. Do you know what we might do? We might just take this plan and, and trash it. And we might just write the deed and do what we intend to do, and then come back and make the plan. We can always do that, okay? But I thought I'd do it the right way.
Well, the thing is, we, we see them come, come through like this all the time because of, prior to 1951, a lot of things were grandfathered.
Right.
Because that's the way things were done back then.
Right.
And all of a sudden, if, if this land, say, Dugan Realty or whoever, the intent, doesn't buy or somebody else buys it, now they get a landlocked lot. Somebody's gonna come in here, they're gonna try to do something, and it becomes a royal nightmare.
It's marsh land, and it's not considered a lot. If you look under the...
Stranger things have happened in these times, you know yourself.
And that's where your billing inspector comes in. You, this is off of your shoulders. You have no responsibility. Let me know what you think I ought to do with the plan, so that you're happy with it.
I, I, I think you should go back to the drawing board and come back with your, your second, second option, because...
Well, you're gonna have to tell me what that option is, okay? 'Cause I don't wanna come back the third time.
Make a motion to deny the plan for inadequate information?
Well...
Yeah.
There are, let's just say, four different paragraphs that we want put on the Form A plan. Dave will have them in the office.
Okay.
Put those on, remove the lot designation, 1000A. And...
Well, are you making notes on this? Will I get this in writing?
If you like. Do we call those disclaimers? The one you've marked, lot 1000, is that, does that include lots 160 through 63, or is that listed as a separate?
It's separate, it's a separate, separate parcel. Same ownership, but separate. Certainly unbuiltable. The subdivision control law specifies the definition of a lot, and it says a definite parcel of land suitable for building one or more buildings. And that's just why we're careful and we use the word parcel when we're dealing with something that's, that can't be built, except for this parcel B, and that's because of the date, the way that he wants the deeds written. It's the only reason.
Seems to me we should see the upland line, you know, our current upland line.
He said he'll take it back. I think what we should do is, you can either withdraw without prejudice and come back to it.
Yes, I can do that. When's your next meeting, do you know?
Two weeks.
We, we missed the last meeting and my client was pulling his hair out. What happened last time? Did you guys postpone it or what happened?
You didn't show up when we were here.
Dave told me that you didn't meet on that last occasion for some reason.
The, um... Maybe second and fourth.
Second and fourth, yes, so would that be two weeks from today?
It'd be the 22nd.
That's too close to Christmas, right?
I don't know what supports feelings. I don't know if everybody's gonna be here, that's, that's the issue.
Can you get me in January?
Certainly.
I think he's already postponed the passing for 30 days anyway, so...
12th.
Would you want me to make a different designation than parcel?
Well, you're not creating parcel B, you said that. It's already been created by a previous act.
Right, that's, right, that's...
So it must have a lot number assigned to it?
Well, the assessors show it as 164 dash 165. Okay, I can use, I can do that. Take out parcel B.
'Cause I think that's part of the confusion, is it looks like we're creating a non-conforming lot.
Do you want me to show square footage on that, on that, on that other parcel the gentleman asked about? One, lot 1000 and, and the frontage lots? Do you want me to show those square footages?
Let's see if this has January yet. Anything else? Add the disclaimers to the plan, remove the lot 1000A label, and put, provide assessors map. Show the lot area and the tax clerk to sign off. Does that cover everything?
We have a whole set of specifications, things that are supposed to show up on a Form A plan.
Yeah, and I've seen, well, a lot of them are checked off, but I don't...
Did, did Dave, did he check those off?
Dave should know better than that.
Date, scale, zoning district. You didn't, you didn't include existing structures on adjoining land in same ownership. You didn't include any notice of decisions or vote of appeals, so I assume that didn't apply?
It could be a screw.
Who's that? Is that me?
The mic before.
Oh.
Okay, if you hit the mic.
Oh.
So you're gonna withdraw it this time?
Yes.
And bring it back with the changes?
Now, will Dave have a record of?
Yeah, I'll get back to him so he can...
How long have you been meeting here?
Has it been a year?
I was over in the other building, looking around, what's going on? I went to high school right here in this building.
This was my sixth grade class.
Was it, yeah. Back then it was a high school, yeah. Way back.
Middle school when I was here, across the hall.
All right, let me just follow this back and you can get it all for Dave and he can have the paragraphs ready for you.
Yeah, sounds good to me. Ready?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'll put you on the agenda for the 12th.
That's great. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Do you want these back?
Uh, sure. Thank you again.
Thanks. Next is a discussion on Sandy Pines subdivision extension request. Did we cover that last time around? Is anyone here for that? Thought we discussed that last time. That's off of County Road. There was a, last meeting, there was a, they'd asked for an extension of a year. I think I have that in my folder here. Subdivision with a four-year extension with the permit extension act. The approval with modifications was set to expire on February 18th, 2011. And then four years would make it February 18th, 2015.
On County Road?
The old Sampit?
Oh, okay, we have one of them in there.
Mm-hmm. This was a letter sent by John Chab, and a letter to notify you that Sandy Pines residential cost a subdivision qualifies for an additional automatic full-year extension. Pursuant to Master in Law, Chapter 240, Paragraph 173, the permit extension act that was recently renewed. Since the date of endorsement of the revised site plan is February 18th, 2009, the approval with modifications was set to expire in 2011. Therefore, the date of expiration of the approval with modifications is now February 18th, 2015. They are seeking a one-year extension to February 18th, 2016. This letter was written by John Chab in 2012.
Why would we do that? If we changed the, any of the rules and regulations or something, they, if we give them an extension, we would have an issue with that.
I don't think there's been anything that would affect a cost of subdivision.
But why would we extend it? Were they up for, they up for this coming January?
Uh, February 18th, 2015 is when it's set to expire.
Okay, nothing's changed in our regulations.
Right. Much a pleasure.
You need something to go on?
Hmm? What's that?
Just to me, looking for your advice on this one.
Well, if we haven't made any changes in it, I assume that we would be approving the same plan and rather kind of go through the process all over. It would make sense to extend it.
Was that a motion?
Yes, yes, it was. Sorry.
Uh, we have a motion to grant the Sandy Pines subdivision an extension to February 18th, 2015, and a second. Any discussion?
2016.
16, yeah. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved.
See, Alan, we're reasonable people.
We have a, we took care of the public hearing. We have no continued public hearings, although that was. Next is a discussion regarding the modification of the ground sign at Dollar General.
Are you ready, right, gentlemen?
Yeah, I don't think so.
No, I don't think I am. That's what happens when you get too much stuff, you're unspotted. I was wondering why you were here. I lost Eleanor Estate somewhere.
Is that a different one?
No, no, I skipped over the other Form A, Lawrence Hill Trustee for, no, that was, that was Outback too, wasn't it?
That's what we have.
No, it's Oregon.
Oh, okay. For some reason I was thinking Frank. I stand corrected, sorry. Form A, Lawrence Hill Trustee for Lot 11, Rocky Road Realty Trust, care of Outback Engineering. This is from Minutab.
Is it okay if I represent the board here without the microphone?
Um, it'd be best if you used it, just so we could pick you up for the minutes.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm Jim Pavlik with Outback Engineering and representing 11 Rocky Road Realty Trust. With me is Larry McCann, I mean, Brian McCann. That's with the ownership group also. And basically what we currently have... And basically what we currently have are two assessors lots along Minnetab in the MR thirty zoning district. There's over a thousand feet of frontage and about four point two acres. We're looking to create three new lots suitable for a duplex construction. And on the plan, we have shown the approved wetland line that the Conservation Commission has approved, that was reviewed and, um. They issued an, uh, an approval back in November. So the three lots each have a minimum of forty-five thousand square feet. And eighty percent of that is the required upland area, which excludes the riverfront area. And we're seeking, in order to allow the duplex construction. Um, we're seeking a waiver from the planning board, uh, under, uh, section six fifteen of the zoning bylaw. It's up to the zoning, uh, the planning board to, uh, grant waivers where, um. We cannot accommodate a two hundred foot circle. Each lot has to have at least two hundred feet of frontage. In order to allow a duplex. Uh, and due to the shape of the parcel where it's, um, abutted by a property to the back, uh, owned by the state. Former rail track that, uh, we cannot fit the required two hundred foot upland circle on the lot. And we note that the surrounding area is comprised of apartments across the street, the fire department down the street. And some other commercial buildings in the area. There's no other single-family housing in that area. So we're seeking a waiver for each of the three lots. That's kind of it in a nutshell. So there's three lots that we're looking to create.
George, why is he in front of us? Shouldn't this court have, shouldn't we put up appeals?
On for what is it?
Well, right off the bat, it's non-conforming.
Because of the shape factor, uh?
Yeah, it's one right off the bat.
I think we do have the authority to, uh, waive the shape factor.
I can read from article six fifteen of the zoning bylaw if you'd like.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's the lot shape factor. It says. "All lots created for building purposes after the effective date of this bylaw shall be shaped so that they can contain within the buildable upland area. A circle of a diameter not less than the frontage requirements of the zoning district within which the lot is created. In addition, any portion of a lot which is narrower in width than thirty feet should not be counted toward the required lot area. In cases where the planning board believes that proposed lots do not meet the lot shape factor criteria and will not be detrimental to the intent of this regulation. The planning board has the authority to waive this requirement." So it's under your jurisdiction to issue that waiver. And that's noted on the plan.
What's the section on that? I think it's.
Six fifteen.
Six fifteen.
It's on page thirty-three.
Believe we can, we can waive the lot shape factor if it's proven that it's consistent with the. Reason for creating it in the first place. While you do have a little bit of a odd shape on the, uh. On the lots to get the area.
In, in fact, none of the lots could, if it was just the single lot, um. It's as narrow as about a hundred forty feet, so we can't even accommodate. Now, the required minimum circle. But in all other, all of the other requirements are met.
How, um. I see top of the bank, where, where's the riverfront, uh. Designation, is that?
I can, I can approach the, uh.
Is that these dotted lines here?
It's this, this line right here.
Mm-hmm.
It must be two hundred foot per area in some way.
Wow. It seems like on Lot Three, uh. There's gonna be a shotgun right on the edge of the road, huh?
I'm sorry, what?
It looks like it's gonna be a shotgun design right on the edge of, edge of the road. You know, I'm looking at the, uh. The upper vegetation, uh. Okay, see where your dotted line goes on Lot Three?
Right.
Halfway down. Okay, you can't do anything on the other side of that two hundred foot line, right?
It would require a conservation approval. We're allowed to alter up to ten percent or five thousand square feet of that.
Are we allowed to create a lot within the? Within the rules, huh?
We've excluded the riverfront area from the lot area calculation. So we still have over thirty-six thousand square feet of continuous upland, which is just this area here.
This area.
Guys, right in here.
Friends, you can now tell him where. Just.
Look that way. Uh, school's over here, Green and the Hills right here. Cross from Green and the. No, cross from Green and the Hill, right here. Uh, no.
So, I guess right off the bat, um. First thing we have to decide is do you feel that it meets the intent of the lot shape factor?
Well, not hardly since it's.
Hmm?
And these lots go back a hundred feet.
Yeah, hundred and.
Went to a hundred and nine and, and the lot shape.
Is twenty.
Circles would be two hundred feet in diameter.
That, that's, uh, you know, you're talking fifty percent right off the bat.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's why I said a shotgun, you know, Louisiana, they built shotgun houses, you know, they were longer and narrower. This one's gonna be, uh. Right up front, going leftward.
Yeah. The setback requirements are great.
Or you get the railroad tracks in back.
The setback is twenty feet for a two-family?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, in the zoning district.
Yeah, I don't think there's any, uh.
Ten feet from the rear?
So the three lots, they could accommodate, um, again, upland circles only. Uh, Lot Three would be about a hundred ten feet deep, the circle, hundred ten-foot diameter. But there's still, again, it, it's riverfront area, but it's still upland. Um, it's wooded area, it's not swampy area. That railroad track, um, separates the Agwam River where the primary wetland resource area is.
And the thirty-foot sewer eastwards?
It drops back pretty quick.
Take it as stormsoil?
Um, town, uh, municipal sewer, I believe.
Is it? Oh, is that where it cuts across the.
Forest, for the plant. Cuts across the river through that property, through the property.
That's where the easement is, right about halfway down the middle, with that little.
The two dashed lines, right?
Yeah, that's where the forest main goes across the plant.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I have a aerial photograph printed out, if I could show this to you.
Shows the surrounding area. Two parcels of rain can, there's no rain, Big Hill area directly across the street is this apartment complex.
Green and the Hill, right.
Yeah. The, uh, the floor school is here. This is a commercial building.
Yep.
Fire department is at this end. There's another commercial building right here. And a commercial development down there, maybe this is more of a family. So the entire area is both the family or commercial. So that's why. We're thinking the area is not suitable for single-family and we'll assume it's a duplexed out development.
Cause we have like two, uh, crews of boats considered pretty, uh, industrial TV show. Yeah, plus, well, there's possible stolen water, you know, that, yeah.
You want to say this? And I also believe. And I'm not sure exact location, but I think some of this land may be under some archaeological importance. Except they mentioned it on.
That was, um, it's on the railroad tracks.
On the other side?
It's on the state property.
Duplexes. Forty-five thousand, right, everything is stopped. No.
I don't have a problem with the lot shape factor because. And these are, this is a very creative plan. We've got little thirty-feet extensions and you've made thirty-six thousand square feet. But just getting up your teeth, but it's there. Um, you can build a house that meets this only requirement.
Duplexes.
Beg your pardon?
They've laid them out to accommodate duplexes.
Forty-five thousand and eighty percent upland and they've got thirty-six thousand upland. Thirty-six thousand and twenty. No, if, if you could've. If you could've put it in, except for these strange extensions, it'd be one thing, but it really doesn't make a difference.
Mm-hmm.
When you're never gonna get back to that.
Are the tracks in the middle of that? Are they one, fade on one side or the other, Jim?
Sorry?
The railroad tracks on the, the old line, do they, are they in the center of that layout or they fade on one side or the other?
Back here?
Hmm.
They're actually.
It must be that, Dave, it's.
They're probably, I think we have like thirty, thirty-five feet buffer before they start with it, the rails and the tires.
Mm-hmm.
But that's their land.
Yeah. Well, you have the same problem with the residential ones at the other end of my ass. Anyway, someone care to make a motion?
Can I move the approve the plan?
Just a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Here we go, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Kill the, kill the pen out. It'll write on. No, I have nothing to write on the MyLot. That'll do.
I'll write this one out.
There's usually one in the box, but. Uh, Best Friends Preschool, uh, they have submitted. As-built and a new plan. We've got those.
Sixty years, that's just for the extension.
Make sure you get it. We've got this one set there. Do you hear for that discussion of the Best Friends Preschool?
I think so, the lights were shining everywhere and we wanted a new plan.
Yeah, the, some of the islands were removed, the lights were changed.
Yeah.
Did it pull electric? I think it was eleven, I think. Well, the, the engineers said we couldn't do it till we're out. It's gonna take them a month or so to do it out. Because John farms out.
That's what we were told, but it seemed like they were already done at that point.
Set the same.
That thing's been bouncing on that one?
Yes.
Okay, ten thirty, yeah, they, they redid it. Ten fourteen.
Well, the previous one showed higher lighting around here where the lights used to be.
Right, because they didn't change them, what they did was basically get this, because there's a template that goes along the center of the light, it's gonna give you the shadows.
Those are the ones, those are the ones that I had an issue with, so light up that house.
Because the neighbors, sure, that's, yeah, well, even this house right here, this one right here is a painting. They don't control the lights like they say they do, I go.
I know, they said they're gonna shut them off, but they haven't.
Yeah, sometime they do, sometime they don't.
Packing lot layout correct now? On the plan? Is that just a stripe area, right, it's not an island?
Yeah, it's just a stripe. Now. Originally, the initial one that we seen way back originally, there were islands in here. There were hard islands, and they made it sound like, you know, and they were eliminated, they weren't eliminated, it was the one here. Okay, that print disappeared somewhere along this whole process.
Look at them. It was a dark area in the little parking lot.
Still is, yeah, because it didn't, it didn't quite do. We're meeting in a minute.
It was very dark area.
Right, this is a dark area, you know, because before, the way the lighting, the lighting was, these were all hard islands a long time ago, they disappeared for whatever reason. Lights were in the middle, so it kept the lights concentric in the middle of the parking lot. When they decided to put them on the outside, here's what you got, it's still over. The last photometrics that we had wasn't updated, so it showed the old print or the old numbers, so it didn't show it. And you know, we know when the lights are here, we're gonna have to fix one, we need to fix it right here. This is, here's the problem, I mean, this is right here, you see that house here, and you got a house right here. On either side. You know, basically, all that shows is what the existing condition is now.
I thought they were gonna take care of it.
How can they? And they took them out. Engineers said they didn't need them, moved them to the side. That was.
My, I remember it's just a concern at the meeting was that there was a dark area, you've got kids running off, it gets dark early this time of year and. And if you've got a dark spot, that's.
It's.
An invitation for.
Well, the thing is, what, what do you see right here, that's your major packing area, right in the middle.
You get a two point three there, you've got a point two right around the front door.
Well.
So that's the name of the, the building. If these people had a one point seven on their lot. And in the middle it's one two.
Tell them back, tell them to shield these, destroy, block the light off.
Okay.
Well, uh, probably something can be done, yeah, sure. They, you know, they can make light do all kind of crazy things, but right now, the way that thing bleeds down, it, it's, it's bad. Well, we know it was gonna be bad.
We think it would be something to take from it.
Well, the only thing that offered was to shut these lights off because they did not open at night. But this time of year it gets dark at one past four.
Yeah, and I think it's the actual six or something, I mean, if it's.
That rectifies the problem of spill over onto the neighbor's property, but it doesn't address the safety for the. For the rest of it. So.
Do we have a figure? Engineering has made a minimum light requirement should be.
I don't have a hot number, but we're probably fine.
They're talking with a kid.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure there must be some standard, there must, there has to be a state standard someplace, state has standards for everything.
Especially for a daycare.
Yeah.
Preschool.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, well, let's, uh.
Bounce it back, get some information, get Charlie.
Yeah.
That's not acceptable.
No, they're lighting up the neighbor's yard better than their own.
Not acceptable.
All right. I will send that back to see what we can do with it. Continued hearings, we took care of item A, so item B is Eleanor Estates, GAF Engineering.
Please move. Yeah. We still haven't received anything from Charlie on what's possibly gonna be for an engineering review. And we did, we have a revised set of, revised print showing you what we have revised based on the input that we received from the last meeting. So I do have some eleven by seventeen, I've just this one sheet that hasn't been revised, we haven't revised all the sheet yet. But we're also still waiting on, uh, let Charlie's review con, not review con, so what his review fee is gonna be, so we can get that check submitted to the planning board so you can set up a count for Charlie to begin his review. For the record, Paul Mattels with GAF Engineering, on behalf of Meredith McNeil, we're here before you for Eleanor Estates. And what we have before you is just a revised one sheet showing the revised plan based on discussions that we had at the last planning board meeting. One of the concerns that Mr. Suddard had, which is the lot to the north of us, we originally had Eleanor Lane right against that property line there. So we've shifted that to provide them with approximately a forty-five foot buffer to the property lines. We're showing forty-seven feet to the right of way line, but once you start doing some of your grading and clearing, it's probably gonna be right around forty-five feet. Uh, then we also had provided to the back lot line from Mr. Rhodes where Buster Cranberry Bog, we're showing on the plans a forty-foot limited cut buffer, which could be pruned and for vista, for vista views, but we're not gonna plan on clear cutting that. So that's basically the modifications that we've done to the plan, we haven't finalized everything, but basically it's gonna be the same concept that we had before, it's gonna be two lots, uh, with the driver coming off a cul-de-sac road, which we're still gonna be asking for waivers on construction, we're gonna keep it as gravel. Uh, the middle of the cul-de-sac will be a rain garden as previously shown on the, uh, the plan that we had submitted before.
So you're just asking for a waiver of paving or?
I know, uh, construction for curbs, uh, street trees, same kind of waivers that we asked before. But we've minimized two waivers and we added another waiver to the plan. We eliminated, uh, we're adding the cul-de-sac into the project, but it's gonna be a gravel road, there's gonna be no curbs. We're not asking, we're not gonna be planting street trees, we're asking for a waiver on that, uh, asking for a waiver on, uh, uh, width of the road to be sixteen feet minimum width. Uh, waiver on fire alarms and street lights also too.
So your intent is to build a gravel cul-de-sac with a.
A rain garden.
Section, isn't it?
Yeah.
Did you see the letter from the fire department?
I have not received any letters from any board members, any boards or departments.
Yeah, the fire department looked at your original plan, and I think they gave you the. Standard request for roadway width and. Yeah, twenty-four foot roadway width and, uh, and a hydrant, which I think is the, yeah.
Well, I think the hydrant.
Boilerplate response.
I think the hydrant, if you have a copy of that letter, I'll take it, if not, I'll call Dave and get one tomorrow. But I believe the hydrant's probably gonna go away now because we don't have the road going down four hundred and fifty feet. There is a hydrant located on this side of the road, on Rainneck Road, so I think that's probably gonna go away. Uh, if the fire department wants twenty-four feet of road, I'll give them twenty-four feet.
I had two responses, Board of Health, which generally.
I could've came up and got that.
And the other is. There was no mention on the turning radius on your former road.
How's the board gonna require twenty-four paved surface, or can we get away with eighteen foot wide gravel, or, or do I need to discuss this with Captain Dykes?
Okay, Sid, that was their, I think boilerplate response to any roadway.
Yeah.
I don't think he saw your revised plan, so you know, if you wanna give it back to him for comment. Questions for the board?
So this is sort of a concept plan and we're gonna get details and everything once.
Correct, once we get the letter from Charlie saying it's gonna cost us X amount of dollars for him to do his review, when we submit the check, we're gonna be submitting revised plans, so Charlie's going based on these revised plans and not wasting his time on the, the original set of plans that were submitted. So, once we get that information from Charlie and we provide the check, you'll be receiving a set of, a full set of revised plans showing the correct construction details associated with this conceptual layout that we have with the smaller cul-de-sac centrally located in the front portion of the lot. And then, of course, the drainage calculations will be revised to reflect the current design. Do you know if anything's been submitted to Charlie for his review and estimate, or?
Uh, we had a discussion with him. I don't know, I mean, myself, it's a two lot subdivision with a proposed gravel road, I don't know how much review there is to do. The rain garden you suggest is that to handle runoff from Rainneck Road or?
Handoff just associated with Eleanor Lane. And, and of course, the front portions of our house when it gets graded and the driveway and stuff like that.
So just looking for elevations, it seems like that's the high, high spot.
The highest spot in the road, lot, yes. So it's basically to treat the, the surface of, that we're gonna be creating for our roadway, it's basically the rain garden will be designed for that.
Comments, public comments, anyone?
Why don't you put this rain garden in the middle of the cul-de-sac rather than off to the side? I don't have the topos, but if I remember, when I drove down Quist Road, it's pretty flat up there.
Yeah, it's basically, the reason why it's gonna go in the middle of the cul-de-sac, it's to minimize any impact on the lots, what's creating drainage esmitts and stuff like that. So you keep it within the road layout, it's all associated with the roadway, maintenance is all done on the roadway layout and you, people don't have to go onto the properties and have easements against that property for drainage purposes.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, because it took off a, a pretty big chunk of the cul-de-sac before.
Correct.
In terms of, uh, traffic or emergency vehicles, whether or not it would, it would have an impact if it was in there as opposed to on the side.
Now, if you remember on the previous plan in the back, we also had to deal with that flood elevation line, that we didn't wanna do any work outside, inside the flood zone line and didn't have any filings with conservation, that's why we proposed the cul-de-sac the way we originally did with like a hammerhead turnaround and then the, in the rain garden squeezed in there. So that way we didn't have to do any filing with conservation. Now that we're outside of conservation, we're far away from the bogs, away from the flood zone, it's that all our work's gonna take place basically in here, there is a. There is a sufficient amount of room to do the rain garden that we want to propose there. And it shouldn't affect any turning radiuses for any vehicles around there and stuff like that.
And this is going to be a complete detention basin in there?
Well, it's not a detention basin like you typically see, it's a rain garden with the plants and the vegetation, the soils and stuff like that. So it's not, it's a landscape depression, it's not just a hole in, in the middle of the cul-de-sac. So it's going to be planted with shrubs and trees.
It's not a retention area, I mean it's a retention area that's not going to then flow somewhere else.
No, it's all going to be infiltrated into the soils.
Ben Sutter, 163 Great Neck Road. I have just seen this for the, for the first time, as you have. It's made from, you know, from my viewpoint. It definitely gives me more of a, of a buffer away from, from the road that was originally planned. And I guess I could say that I, you know, it, it certainly, it certainly is an honest effort to, to address my concern. And, and I do appreciate that. That's pretty much all I can say at that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jared Rhodes, 155 Great Neck Road. That plan is certainly a lot different, much more suitable. The only thing that we have in question is in the corner where the reservoir is, the 100-foot buffer goes from the corner, well, from the edge of the wetlands is where it starts. But under a farm plan, we can legally expand that reservoir closer to the, the property line, which would push the buffer back. So if, if that lot were to be made like that, then that would eliminate any ability for us to expand the water hole.
Do you have grandfather's sand rights?
Uh, yes, well, my father does.
On, onto their property here?
Onto which property?
This property here.
No, I'm just talking specifically about the buffer zone.
No, 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 grandfather's farm rights, on a lot of the old bog deeds, they had mineral rights. So in other words, you could dig sand on your neighbor's property, on a lot of ancient deeds and cranberry bogs. I'm involved with bogs, so I know a little bit about the way we're in the olden days and a lot of people aren't aware of that. You might, the oppugment, want to look in the deed. Because by rights, if I had mineral rights, I could keep on digging in your property and taking that sand, you can't stop me, it's in my deed. And a lot of the new deeds don't have that, a lot of the old deeds still, and that bog's been there a long time, might be something you might want to look into.
Okay, cranberry bog, grandfather rights?
Grandfather, mineral rights.
Mineral rights.
Yeah.
The, well, if you were to expand that reservoir, it would push the buffer or it would, it wouldn't adversely affect you, I don't think. It would affect this lot, it would change, it would change how they would construct it. It wouldn't, it wouldn't block you from expanding the reservoir.
Well, except if we did it after they built. And if they built in an area where when that buffer zone was pushed back, it would be within their building area.
I don't think it works both ways.
I think if we construct our house and then if you put your reservoir close to our property line and then the buffer zone just comes onto our lot, it's not going to affect us anymore than what it originally did. Our septic system's going to be located in the front yard anyhow, it's going to be located here. So basically, whatever you do on your property, yeah, it's going to affect our buffer zone where we might have to go file a conservation. But once it gets constructed, we're not going to be, it's not going to matter anymore.
Right.
And then we also are putting on the plan a 40-foot
Yeah.
buffer zone that's going to be maintained on the property at all times, so that's a benefit for you too.
Yeah.
But we are- That was just something we wanted to make sure it wouldn't be a problem in the future if, if say they built the house in the, in the back corner of the lot.
Yeah, no, if you were to go ahead and build that reservoir today, and then yeah, we'd say, if I was to go to conservation and try to put a house on the lot, then I might have to file a notice of intent now because that 100-foot buffer zone might be affecting placement and the grading on the lot and stuff like that.
And that's pretty much it.
Were you able to determine whether the path that cuts across here is fixed or whether it's?
I haven't been able to 100% determine if, I know the deed talks about he has the rights to use a path that was granted by Mrs. Burgess to get to the back piece and then continue down to the water. We believe that was across where Cliff Road is today and then it joins back here to get to the water. But again, we're not going to be interfering with that path. Basically, that path's going to be maintained there, that's going to come onto our cul-de-sac road, come off the cul-de-sac road and you can continue going down that path. We're not going to interfere with his access if that's the way he currently uses it today and wishes to use it in the future.
So there's no burbs or anything going on to your cul-de-sac?
No.
So at any point in the future that could be relocated or?
Yeah, that's what we're basically doing is relocating it now. Because we're, again, it's going to, we're going, he's going to continue using this. And then when he comes into the cul-de-sac, he's just going to follow the cul-de-sac, come off the cul-de-sac and then continue going down the way he normally did. So we're not interfering with his travel ways or whatever you want to call it. But there isn't a, there isn't a plan specifically on the registry of deeds that says he has a path that's so wide and it goes from this property line across the middle of our lots to this lot line. It just talks about he has the rights to pass from Great Neck Road down towards the water and continue down that existing 30-foot right-of-way. Which again, I believe is here to there and then down towards the water. That's what our intent, belief is on the way the deed was written.
Questions?
Going to get a full set of plans?
Uh, yeah, do you feel that this needs peer review? This is a pretty basic two-lot subdivision.
I think we should still get peer review on it.
I agree.
All right, I will get that in the works.
Is that something that could be done and get Charlie's estimate before Christmas?
I would think so, it's, like I say, it's pretty basic, it's just a two-lot subdivision.
I think Charlie went to the- I think he, I think he did look at all of us, so if he's in the area, he should be able to-
All right, because we're, I'm, I'm thinking that we should be back before the board for the second meeting in January. That would give us enough time to have people with, you know, Christmas vacation anywhere they're going to be going for the new year and then we get our plans revised, submitted to Charlie and hopefully we get everything addressed before the second meeting in January.
The 26th. Very good, I will get the, did you have a question?
Who's Charlie?
Charlie Rowley is our peer review engineer.
Oh, okay, good. And a second question, can we get one of those small copies of them? I got one.
We got a whole bunch here. If there's no more questions or requests, I would love to continue the public hearing to January 26th at 7:00 PM.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Proposed?
I think I heard my proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn now? I got the look. We have a discussion with Mario Zabona of the John Akin Estates on the Hathaway Road.
I am, I'm here at the request of the Mechanics Bank. And in terms of the tri-party agreement, they, the date that they have to complete the road because obviously I'm not going to be able to do it in this winter, you know? So they were asking, they asked me to ask for a, an extension from April 30th to July 30th, just to be safe. And we should certainly be able to comply by then. We have a lot of the groundwork done, which we've been working on feverishly trying to get it all done. So that we could do a proper job in the spring on the road, make any repairs, have Charlie, you know, review it, look at it, make any repairs necessary and then finish the road.
Did we extend you to April or did we extend you to December?
No, we extended it to December 15th, but that's not, you know, my eyes are bigger than my stomach, there's a lot of work over there. We've been doing it, we've got a lot of it done, but we prefer to do a lot of this groundwork prior to trying to, you know, I mean, our intent honestly is to leave the town with a pristine road, not anything that's trashed. Because ultimately, I am responsible for it, you know? When we have the as-built done, you know, we just want, we want to make sure it's done properly. The, there is an account at the bank, just so you know, it's not fictitious monies. I mean, there's a separate account set up right now that has the agreed-upon amount according to the tri-party agreement in that special bankbook. And so they asked me to ask you if you could do that. Because, I mean, I'm going to build it, you know, they're not going to build it, it's going to be me, so.
Well, I think the tri-party agreement says that if you don't, they will.
Well, yeah, right. Of course, it's, you know, and I, and we, and I know that the, the amount that's in that bankbook obviously is my money. And so we will, you know, build that out of pocket and then go back to get it and certainly the values, I mean, the amount is increased by 50%, so we're certainly not going to renege on something like that, so.
Also, just, do you have a homeowners association set up there?
I do, yes, we do.
Just making sure, no, any surprises up here?
No, no, we, we have a homeowners association.
That pile will get replaced?
Yes.
What's your pleasure, folks? I think the chance of me finding the most current extension in here pretty soon. SCA.
So who, who's requesting the extension, you or the bank?
Oh, the bank.
The bank give you any documentation, any letters, or is it all verbal?
No, it's just, they just asked me to come here. I couldn't, I couldn't get you documentation, you know?
I think we should have something for the record?
I don't know anything about Hathaway Estates. It's just a question of how much time they get to complete the work on there?
Yeah, I think we, I'm just looking for the original. I think he was given, what was it, one year to complete the roadway?
I was.
Originally, and then if not done in that period of time, it was the responsibility of the lender to get it accomplished. Due to lagging sales, he was given one extension to-
Yeah, an extension to like a couple of months.
To December 15th.
Yeah, I thought we could do that, but it was a lot more-
During the time of year when they closed the asphalt plant.
Who's the lender?
Mechanics Bank.
So I think
Because of paper trail codes, I think we should have something, something-
Yeah, in the past, you know, to protect us and yourself too, also.
Yeah, I didn't even think of it, but, but I could certainly, I could go there tomorrow and we, and get a letter from them.
There are some bankers that are like politicians, they'll tell you anything.
And certainly bring it over to the office, yeah. With the formal requests, I don't think that's an issue.
Any objections? We're going to come back with a letter.
Yeah, if you come in with the extension request and with the banks sign off on it or acknowledgement of it. And with the board's permission, I will grant it to, what are we looking for, July?
July 30th.
That was June 30th.
July, you're looking for July?
July 30th, yeah. I, I personally, I mean, I'm just saying that I, I certainly, I plan to have it done sooner than that myself. Because we should have a lot of groundwork done, but I, that's, that's a David question.
How many houses have you got built?
We have all the, we have, we're working on all of them actually right now. We have four structures that we have up and working on. And we're, we have one foundation, we have the footings in for the last foundation, we're trying to get it done in this week if the rain holds up, you know? And then we have-
Not tomorrow.
No. And then we have, we're doing all our groundwork, all on the grounds, you know, waters and so forth. And so we're, we're pretty close, you know? The only thing in the spring was, obviously you're not going to get any landscaping done, but we're going to be, we're going to get most of the, you know, grading done. We'll be spreading the home and getting the landscaping done and tying that in. Like on the one side, we had the sidewalk, we want to be able to tie the landscaping in with the sidewalk to do it all, you know, properly. So it doesn't look like a piecework, you know? And so they request, they ask just to be safe, June, uh, July 30th. I would-
They've got houses and people out there, how long is the road going to be unfinished? It's a real problem.
How many houses are sold?
Four of them. We have all the houses in, all up by the spring.
Is just one occupied right now?
Yeah, we're passing on one this month and one next month. And then one in April, April 1st.
Is the road in any shape that it can be plowed without plowing?
Oh, yeah.
There's no manhole sticking up, nothing like that?
No, no, we took care of that.
There's storm took them right out?
No, no, they're still there. No, actually the roads-
That's his responsibility.
That's easy to say, George. I, I can, I can remember in the past the subdivisions that was never completed, things went bad. And the people were living here for quite a few years. And the three-quarter inch plywood that was covering up the storm drains was finally rotten away and they wanted to know if there was something to be done.
Three-quarter inch plywood?
Yeah.
Oh, well, that we don't.
We got that condition right now.
They put plywood, they put plywood instead of steel plates?
Yeah. And everybody was gone except for the people that lived there.
Well, we're not going to be, I mean, we have most of these-
Well, you know, part of our job is to protect the-
I understand that, of course.
We have to ask these dumb questions.
No, you see that we've complied with just about, you know, everything over there and we're trying to babysit. I mean, it's the, the thing is that the road, you know, you try to babysit it the best you can, but, you know, obviously if we put a finish on there trying to do what we're doing, it would be a mess, you know?
Well, that's, that's something there. All we said- Well, that's, that's something there. I've always had disagreement with developments that some towns rec, uh, suggest that the roads are finished before any building permits are issued. And people says, well, the road's going to get tore up, with the machines going in and out and this and that. What happens when you build a house in an existing subdivision or existing neighborhood that's there? They take care when they bring the machinery in.
Yeah, but with all due respect, that's one house maybe, maybe two, even three. But when you get a situation where you're developing the site like we are over there, as, you know, we didn't have the best site conditions in the world there, so we're shifting materials from one lot to another to, you know, uh, and that is a pretty tough site.
Yeah, but the thing is.
So you have to.
I know a lot of towns, and like I said, I always said that, I always thought that the site should be completed.
I, you know, we do, when we do, when we do go into a neighborhood to build a home where we have, uh, say, an individual lot, uh, and I've done it, and we use, we put tire scrubbers down, we do what we have to do to try to protect the road, and we do it the best you can. But in a situation like this here, and it's a, and it depends on the site as well. I mean, this is a pretty tough site, which we are, we have, uh, we've got it in pretty good shape right now. And, uh, so we still have some stuff to move around, but it does play havoc with the road, you know? And this way here, you know, uh, when we go back, back there in the spring, and we all just landscape everything all at one time, get the dry, everything in, tie the driveways in to the paving and the finish, you know? So everything is contiguous. It's going to be pretty pristine, and that's the way we'd like to leave it. Because ultimately, if you babysit it, or try to babysit it the best, and it gets some damage done, you know? I mean, to be honest with you, I'm the guy that's got to fix it somehow. And sometimes it's, it becomes a mishmash. How do you, how do you repair something like that? You know, you know, you get in there with infrared doing what, you know? Sometimes it just, I just feel myself is better this way here, as long as you're, the town's protected. The money that we agreed upon is in the bankbook, so it's there, you know?
Is there a base course, anything down?
Of course, yes.
Oh, the base courses down?
Yeah, curbing's in, base course. All we have left to do is the sidewalk.
The curb has been set.
Curb's all set, yeah.
So it's basically finished coat and finished landscaping.
Uh, yeah, we have, we had most of the landscaping done, and we, uh, it's already done. So we have to, uh, put the trees in, uh, so, obviously, it came through the spring. And, uh, and then landscape the edges and whatever, the finished landscaping.
All right, that subdivision, and you may have changed it, originally called, uh, Leach Field on the opposite side of the road from the, is that still happening?
Yeah.
The leach field from one lot was on the opposite side of the street.
Yeah, but we have, what we have, it is, but we have a, uh, we prepared for a, what do you call it? A conduit going under the road. That was inspected.
And that was permitted and all that?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. It's all permitted.
We led to believe that that was going to be a difficult permit.
Uh, it's been permitted for quite a while.
So, it's the board's pleasure. Do you feel comfortable with granting that extension with the?
From the bank?
I do.
So, can I get a motion of that effect, and when he provides the.
Paul just made one.
I'm making all the motions. You have to make some.
You do a good job, Paul.
The extension, provided we get a, uh, an agreement letter from the Mechanics Bank.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? opposed? I think stay, so move.
Okay, great. I'll, uh, I'll go to the bank tomorrow and bring that over to Dave, to the office. Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Very good.
Have a nice weekend.
Very good.
Thank you, same to you guys.
Are you going to holly trees on here?
No.
Jeez, I wanted to go cut some holly for my door.
Oh, there must be holly in there somewhere.
Not one.
No, not bad. I'm surprised.
I love holly trees. Yeah, no. What do you want, I'll see if I, I have other crockings. You want a male or a female?
Uh, female, with the red berries.
See, I know more about holly trees. They even, they even have unisex ones.
That must be what I got in my eye, because it's got red berries and it's got nobody to meet with.
Because what, if, if you got a male and female, it's got to be so many feet of powder, they won't fall in it, right?
Yeah, but they also have a hybrid now that is both male and female.
Well, everything's hybrid now.
Yeah. Thanks, have a nice holiday.
You too. I can, I can feel this conversation slipping away.
Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Uh, anybody get a chance to look at solar bylaws? Just ask the question.
No, I haven't.
You know, we got, we have a background that we can look at this and think, oh, you know, that number of kilowatts definitely should have this or that. I mean, and, and it's one, I just don't know how we're going to be able to take a look at this and really make any kind of a decision.
Well, the, the thing is with solar that, that's, that's dangerous is the state and the federal government's always changing the rules.
Did you look at the Mary? Well, we recently did about six months ago.
Oh, I would see that one.
George can't do work for Mary. He spends a lot of time on, uh, small solar, but you can take the rest and watch. I think you don't have to be a better whip.
Um, is there money in the budget to send us to this public-private partnership contest, uh, conference in Dallas?
No.
I don't know. We got some towns, but I don't know which town it is.
I think it's Durham.
It's Durham.
Durham, I suppose, because you might want to, Mary, when, when, uh, Man was doing his, uh, Wood Sherby project, one of the guys that were on the Mary's solar committee, whatever, that was running, brought paperwork and stuff to us, to the board. We're more than happy to sit and talk, whatever else, despite all the challenges. Might save you a lot of time.
We could probably deal with it in terms of setbacks and, and visibility and percentage of lot coverage, stuff like that.
Also, remember you got $20,000 in surplus stuff starting for a few weeks.
What, what is surplus doing of all solar for the communities?
They're doing, uh, right now, the biggest project they have is, uh, regional purchase of electricity. You know, towns are getting together, and they're going to do it from town and residents, the same purchases of electricity and pricing. We have a step-up thing, you know, you know, that the residents do their hand with the resources. Plus the fact that we've already got the six megawatts, you know, SFRID credits, you know, for, for us, for 20 that we took. So the town right now, we're getting all the, all the, if we were able to sell some of the SFRID credits, then we can go through some more, you know, electrical savings. Every time we do savings, it means we have less usage and therefore less credits to apply, we have prints without, without, you know, building lighting.
Uh, and before we adjourn, what's your thoughts on December 22nd?
It's Christmas Eve.
Christmas party?
It's our schedule.
What is that going to stop me from being on Tuesday? Is it not being on Tuesday? Or the following Tuesday?
Oh, yeah.
It's New Year's, right? It's two days apart.
Twenty-nine.
It's a nice time to go white girls. There's nothing happened.
What do you feel? Should we wait, see what the, if any agenda items come up?
Well, you know, if we get some plans or something coming in, I don't, they'll need to come to a meeting if we don't have anything to do.
All right, I will, uh...
I'm leaving town, so I'm, I'm around doing, it doesn't make any difference to me.
We'll see what the agenda looks like, and if it's, uh, if everybody takes the week off, then we will also. If not, we'll. Very good. I heard a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Before you adjourn.
I made a motion, Paul.
Before you adjourn, one thing.
Oh.
The board want to do anything about, uh, the water store on Mary.
Which one, Brown's?
Yeah, they, they still got, still got problems with the consist of buildings, like, you know, put, probably sign the building.
Aren't they re-landscaping it also?
Well, they already did amongst yourselves, huh?
They did?
Yeah.
Well, they did, they did come in last spring and asked to plant grass where the mulch was, but it didn't happen.
I have this, my two cents is the place that's in the hall.
It's a mess, it's a mess.
Uh, yeah, the recent storms have shredded their banners.
And they're very, and they're very convenient about doing work on that property that they have. They basically give them, you know, warhead migrants, they're, they're responsible for anyways. I mean, I'm surprised the neighbor trust gives community out anybody, because we promised that it would be nice. It's, it's terrible.
I mean...
For, for a new building, it's been there about a year, not even a year. It looks like it's been there for four years.
I mean, it's the same thing they have on, you know, Cranberry and I have with the lake followings. It's just a massive, it violates all the sign bylaws.
Oh, it's just stones here.
So what are you requesting us to do?
A massive question. Do you want to bring them back in and then comply with what you guys passed them with?
Who's, who's the, um, enforcement officer?
Uh, Dave Moore.
Using their part of his jurisdiction?
I'm just asking, it's kind of a plan, but then comply with plenty of work. You can sit there, it's up to you if you want to ask them.
Well, well, the, the...
I'm making a comment because I've had, I've had four different people during the year come to me and say, how, this is what they...
What, what happens, Alan, is all the years the planning board have always gone, put conditions on, and when we get done a sign off, the next step, who's supposed to be the enforcement officer? We've had this conversation for years when we met on the other end of the hall, 15 years ago.
You told the enforcement officer, it's Mr. Moore.
Yeah, when, when Ted was here, Ted wouldn't go up.
Now, Ted pretty much looked things over before he signed off on the permit.
But the thing is, if, if certain things are supposed to be done.
Unfortunately, in this particular job, John Charver signed off on the permit, and I don't know what he signed up on. I don't know if he took our order of conditions and checked them all off, or whether he...
Well, they made promises they were going to do it after, in fact, they just never did. It's up to you guys if you want to do it. I'm just telling you that. There's been complaints, you know, in fact, you refer the complaints to, uh, the court enforcement officer, but...
There's been complaints from day one with, with, uh, the lighting and the overall look of it. I kind of stepped away with it because of the accusations they made when they were trying to open, so.
Dave didn't want an opportunity to do the right thing.
Mm-hmm. We, you know, we bent over backwards to help him, but...
The inside is still as bad as the outside.
I don't go when, I don't drink, so.
Oh, really? I would hate to spend the solicitor's life in the library.
But I, I think it's, uh, the building, it, it's, the zone enforcement's officers, that's where his job's supposed to pick up, the next thing. I, I really think that. That's been a problem going way, way back.
Well, you have some places where you know everyone, but it's not great, you know?
Right, I think, gentlemen, move.
I don't think, well, there's not much to go do about the landscaping this time of year, but they could fix the lighting and, and... And, uh, correct the signage.
Well, the thing is, is, um, what can you do to make him bring it up to code? Can he, uh, dare to get the OP?
Well, they still have to get a license.
No, there's a license from Paul Reed.
Okay.
Select the best avenue.
Put, put the threshold on it. Uh, it's not fear to other people that are in business. It, it's not just, just Brown's. There's, there's a lot of places that are like that, you know, they'll, they'll promise you the world, and once they get their OP, they forget about it and they go, ah, same on you, you know? Uh, and, and there's no, there's no repercussion.
Well, the recourse here is, it's, um, requires an annual licensing law.
Problem is, licensing is what happened.
Well, they give him...
Give him a term or...
Give him 90 days or give him, give him six months to correct.
Or, or, or give him a little note saying, hey, you know, this isn't done. Uh, you're getting your license and you're being noticed, notified at the same time that if it's not done, next, next renewal is not going to happen or whatever. Something has to be done.
No.
I don't, I don't know, it's...
On the approved plan, in the landscaping, it doesn't say loam and seed. It just shows the plantings, and in between it doesn't say loam and seed.
And I believe it was two years, two-year growth also, which is a lot.
The fact that the plants haven't grown and have died, and they're...
Kind of the, 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 like, side of the property, it's supposed to be a sort of a fence or something, I think it was.
I think the junipers were planted, but...
They were.
Yeah, they were, they were the juniper. It's just they got a precedent.
But, uh, that's not the...
The town started upgrading, so you have to pull the water.
And, and that's not the only place along, that's, that's, you know, all it takes is a couple. And like I said, it's, uh, it's, it's not fear of the other ones that do that.
I just want to have a time of myself because they promised to take care of it. We have a good person across the street who's often involved in lighting this amount. We guaranteeing the whole, I don't know, the road, but they do it by order.
It does say that the lighting was supposed to be shielded, and that they're just wall packs, they're not shielded. Looks like the Alamo.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still on, I'm still on.
Okay.
If you care, if you pull up the, uh, I have data, see if you find their conditions and, uh, go back and let, let, take the, the, the...
I do recall when they, when they requested to loam and seed the areas that were mulched, I looked up the, the original plan submission, and it, it's silent on that loam and seed. It just shows the individual plantings. It doesn't say loam. But we did allow them, we did give permission to loam and seed, but that didn't happen.
Like I said, they, they, they made it all starts in front of that new block, you know? The excuse was, you don't have control, but it's still there probably.
Well, the Alamo, you didn't get what was supposed to be there. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 9:10.